...special reception, I mean, there should be, should be a way with enough, you know, enough forewarning to deal with.
I just want to clarify all the exceptions up front if possible, so we don't have to keep making special reception.
Yeah, gotcha. But, you know, even still, if that's not possible for anyone, it's not a deal breaker for what.
No, no, I'm sure.
And it's an outside event, which it could very well be, I know you have space behind you, there's the noise level for the neighborhood, which has been a huge concern that we've been working on for a long time, that we don't want to just give that right back up. But then again, we want to encourage and be radically liberal as we can and business-friendly without hurting our residents.
I think we're already controlling it, always.
You are.
You are.
So, I mean.
So, anything we drop in would not change that or the closing time unless we go into something that would appear unfair to what we've already done.
Be a quick cake draw for New Years.
What? For New Years?
Yeah, they can have a cake draw.
Oh, three, two, one.
Kids, you crazy kids. All right. So, what do we want to do? So, what I'd like us to do is, is if we could get the comments from these individuals distributed to council, and let's, let's look at those as, as council via email, look at them, make any comments that you've got, maybe we could, like I say, propose a hybrid approach to this, we can nail the store shut and then look at how we're going to proceed with the rewrite. So, because these are immediate needs, and I want us to look at this very carefully. I don't, if we're going to do the rewrite, I want, from my own perspective, I want to make sure that we dotted every i and crossed every t, so we, we get this done as efficiently as quickly, but, but that it's well fall through.
Can we throw the flat fee out the window?
Now's the time for us to talk about that.
Flat fee.
I just think it'd be cheaper not doing the flat fee.
Oh, you're talking about the flat fee on the attorney?
Yes, that was something we asked him to do, and he's covering himself, because we change our minds a lot. I think it can be done a lot cheaper, and come talk to me, Steve, he does too.
If we handled the comments on our side back and forth, and then gave, you know, okay, here's where we think we are, that will be a lot more costly than.
But we can't, we can't tell him to write it, and then it comes to a meeting and it's changing, and he's got to go back.
That is where issue.
That's where the, that's where the caserous should rise, so.
So, that's where I think it's important to dialogue between our citizens and us, and that we get an idea of really our vision and direction on this, and then we say, now, legalize this. Thank you.
I'd be happy for y'all to point out to me an ordinance that you like. That would be an easy place to start.
Like the Mutico, far from John's Creek.
Well, Mutico has five or six thousand ordinances, alcohol ordinances on hand.
Taylor is two Georgia.
Yeah, four fee.
Yeah, we'll, we'll, we've, we've already begun to do research individually. I've been doing mine, afforded, afforded fad bills to council, I'm going to look at the John's Creek ordinance and see what it looks like, and it's, it's cutting the pace party after.
Right, I'll give you, the closer y'all, y'all give me to a start.
And then you're like 25 bucks.
It could be, and if you pass something like that, just change, change the name, it could be 25 bucks, but I'm serious.
No.
Y'all have an appetite for it, tell me what you like, we'll start from there.
Because the first rewrite we did was custom made, and it was a long process.
I don't think, I don't think y'all need a custom.
I don't think so, yeah, I don't think so.
Well, you expressed to us at a prior meeting, you don't write anything from scratch, you're always looking at existing, so, I mean, I wasn't surprised by that, and we were already working on that, but I welcome anything that's sent to us that we can make it clearer and easier, cheaper.
We have copies of eight different cities that Mutico suggested, all of which were brought up by the gentleman who spoke ahead of time.
Yeah.
We have those copies.
Thank you.
Point taken, Travis, so it's not taking comments.
Those are the stuff you emailed as well, but, just, that's just a quick reference, Hayville, you print it out, eight and a half by eleven sheet, twelve point five, I didn't figure out, and sixty-two pages, if you look at the other eight cities that have just been formed, they range anywhere from twenty-two to forty. That's not necessarily the depth of our law, it's just probably the frankness on our law over ten years.
Point taken.
So, that being said, if you were looking at folks that have their auto shops, that have basically a law that takes care of root bugs as well as what someone referred to as bottled plugs, Milton, as well as Don Woody, pretty much, if you put them in a text analysis thing, they're word by word besides the word that Woody had told you.
All right, thank you. All right, Mike?
I just wanted to say one thing, if these guys are waiting for some of this stuff, and we're talking about a Band-Aid and the consequences of good cause, you could go that, just like you do a moratorium, and say, this Band-Aid is good for ninety days, you get close enough, you can add to move it for thirty more days, you could, but that way you're not opening up something that can create a monster, because it would be a temporary thing that you would give them, and that way, you, because a Band-Aid's not supposed to be permanent, it's supposed to be temporary.
Okay.
So, you could timeline it out, it might be able to get them to open right away, but once you get the law set up, then it's fine for them.
Good suggestion.
Okay. I also have the discussion, thank you. City manager report. Do you need any more direction?
Yes.
It looks like you're looking at like, direction.
Okay, so, so what I understand is that I will distribute what comments I've already gotten to council, and obviously we'll need to receive any other emails I haven't, you just send them on, and then we'll take a look at those and try to come up with something that we think is a good starting point, and when council is kind of happy with that, then you can burn that over to the attorney and make it happen.
I'm good with that.
So, we're looking at like, maybe having some kind of fix by the first, are that first council meeting coming up?
Well, Saturday's part of what we're doing in this area, right?
Yes, I mean, if we get the direction, we can move it as fast as you want to move, but, I mean, I, I need to know what it is you want. It's, it's not like going to Publix and buying a box of crackers. I, I got to have something to start with, and then we can make it, make it work.
But it's hard, because I don't know.
Well, yeah, I understand, but, but.
Yes, it is hard.
Again.
Like, I'm a grocery store, I just know I'm hungry, I don't know why.
With, with the hybrid, I think we, I think we fix the immediate issues.
Okay, so, immediate issues we divert tonight are the top priority.
Out, from my perspective.
Okay. So, we can move those, with your consensus, we can move those.
Okay.
Okay, so, we're into Band-Aids, okay?
That's fine.
To address those.
Right.
And then we'll take comment on the rest of it and work on ordinance that we like as a starting point.
I think, I think we need to research the ordinances from, from our sister cities, especially the new ones, because we didn't have breweries, we didn't have growlers, we didn't, we didn't have wine bars, none of that stuff was talked about when we did this ordinance, so, if we're addressing it, we address, we address it with, with more modern ordinances by newer cities, because they've got, I mean, Alpharetta, John's Creek, those cities have the very thing that we're trying to attract already, so.
Yeah, they, they started recently, and they don't have the history we've had, and it kind of reminds me of the.
That's going to take some.
The cell tower days, you know, when those first regulations came out, I mean, the technology's moving faster than the ability of the, you know, governing bodies to react to it, so that's what we're trying to get that instinct.
Okay, awesome.
All right, we started in the eighteen hundreds, we need to leap two centuries in some of this thing.
By the time we're two hundred, we'll have this game down, right?
Okay, that's how.
All right. Where's Bud?
Where's Bud?
And something you said that I, I don't want people to misunderstand, when, when he said that when council's happy with it, we'll give it to you, it didn't like, y'all aren't going to know, I mean, we're going to have people involved and be receiving it, so, it's not going to just be some little secret meeting, we're going to have the six pool tables and hand it to them, so, it's going to be together, we're going to figure this out.
It's a public process.
Yes.
Okay, I'm used to working in a fishbowl, that's what I do, and we're not trying to hide any information, but we're trying to take the best examples we can.
I love the stuff, thank you, please, to help us.
All right, you're up next, Wade, for your city manager report.
We have the retreat ready to go for Saturday, and we are hosting the South Fulton Municipal Thursday night, been working on that, and working on multiple other projects, and next meeting of the Arotropos is twenty-four March, so, and then I've been working quite actively on the T-Spot and some other insurance, so, lot going on.
Yes, sir.
And like I said, the, the, back to the question that was asked by the citizen on the building collapse, I mean, there's not a whole lot we can do there until we have a good handle on what resources we have to work with, and it's been a process to get the attorneys and the insurance companies to cooperate, so.
Who's insurance company?
It is the contractor subs, subcontractor and contractor.
There's, there's three insurance companies, there's a contractor, subcontractor and hours.
Yeah, it's like hurricane.
Yeah. Probably about five would turn.
Okay. All right, thank you, Wade. All right, well, the fruit basket turn around on the departmental updates tonight, we'll start with you, Jennifer, city clerk. Surprise.
She will go first. No, I don't, pretty much like to wait, but that's okay. We have South Fulton coming up on Thursday, emailed all of you guys your GMA convention forms, you should have those, and, and we can get them back as soon as possible, and then we also need to get in your personal financial disclosure forms, which will be by June thirty. You can turn it in anytime.
All right, Tommy?
I don't have anything to say.
Okay, you're a retiree, ain't got to give anymore to form. All right, David?
We're still working, getting all the approvals together, hopefully closed within a month or so on the, for the two restaurants in the front of Dearborn, but something exciting that's just kind of come up after that is another potential restaurant that would kind of, I feel like, finish us out, and we would be a little destination, kind of like a mini decatur, a very small mini decatur, but this is a really high-end restaurant, and she has, with it goes a store, which is gifts and home accessories, and she's been very successful for a long time, so I'd always kind of had her, you know, on the back burner, and there's a potential building that if I can make some stuff work, that we've always wanted something better in, that I thought she'd be perfect for, so, went down, met with her, we've talked on the phone, and so, I was going to email y'all today, but we talked this afternoon, and I had a meeting, and didn't get to sell it after tonight, but she's very interested, because the real estate's kind of complicated, it's all got to try and move fast, so, she wants to know whether the city would really welcome her, I said, yes, the city would really welcome you, but I had the idea, and she loved it, of maybe getting a group to go down and have dinner at her restaurant, so I'll send y'all an email about that, but with that, it's, it's kind of a high-end, nice place that, you know, Porsche executives would go, and Delta executives, and then you'd have the retail store downtown too, which we don't have a lot of retail right now, so you would have everything from the wine bar to a tavern, a taqueria, and this nice restaurant, and then the theater, and they want to do a music venue with theater, so, within a year, we would have a downtown that really functions well again, so I was really excited about that, and I'll send y'all an email, if we can just go have dinner, just for y'all to meet her and just show her that we would be excited about that.
We're getting to the point where we could do like a seven-course dinner.
Okay.
You know, you just go down the street, you keep, you know, you have one thing.
A progressive dinner.
Progressive, progressive.
Yeah, you have beer girl in the middle.
And then, this is far out, but it's such a tough thing to get, that I was at least glad to get the response, a guy that I've talked to about a year ago, who's an independent grocery store operator, and actually did consulting for a grocery store that was in South Atlanta that Emily had told me about, I touched base with him again, and he wants to meet in a couple of weeks and talk, because he said he would be looking for another location, so, again, don't start getting ready to buy groceries yet, but I was excited, because it's just.
We've only been talking about it for eighteen years.
Yes, we're in an almost impossible spot to get one demographically, but I said almost, and I'm going to turn over every rock and.
It's going to be somebody that looks at the dynamics of our daytime population, outside of the box, it's not going to be a chain either, it's not, it won't fit their model.
No, that's the thing, when you go to chains, I call them, but they tell you ahead of time what they want, and we don't fit the patterns.
They're going to, they're going to look at Walmart down there, Walmart hardest when they came, because that's just another grocery store right down the street, so.
But this guy's an independent operator, so, I gave him a tour a year ago, and he was impressed with the city and what all was going on, and so, I knew one ready man, but I touched base again, so I'll, I'll let you know if something else.
All right. All right, Mr. Schuster?
Yes, sir, I think the only thing that's come to the attention of the council is our annual run of state and federal reports, and we usually have about two thousand of those, and obviously, we have to finish the audit and the financial statements before we can complete those reports, and as you know, we're running, running behind on the financial reports, so we're running behind on the subsequent reports.
Understood, okay. Keep plugging along.
Hold on a second, do any of those have a penalty for late filing?
My day out here, we're about three or four years behind. They never revoke, withhold any grants, any time.
Okay, but I mean, so there's no. No penalty, okay, and, and so.
I mean, they have the right to do that, line always is.
We have, okay.
No penalties withholding.
Withholding.
Alan?
We are working on the South Arts Film Series grant for next year to apply to be a host again, and then we've got the next film for this grant cycle coming up on February twenty-sixth, Friday the twenty-sixth, at Christchurch, and then we've also been working with the, through the GMA intern program, that Mr., under Mr. Wicks' direction, to do a survey for all of the businesses that have applied for a business license in our city in the last three years, so that will be going out on Friday, to get some input on that and the development process feedback.
All right, it's a great idea.
Do we want to mention this eighty thousand dollars in here?
Oh, the LCI study?
I think that's a pretty good thing to bring to the attention of our, our group.
Bill?
That was your bill.
Well, Bill, you go next.
Segue.
It's just a study to update, the LCI study was done previously, this is in the pipeline for transportation improvements, and it's an eighty-twenty match of the ARC.
So, we get eighty thousand and we pay twenty?
Well, that's the estimate, it's to be bid out.
Oh, okay. To get the work done, okay.
One of the cool things about that, though, is they are also going to look at this study being part of our comp plan process, and is it kind of an experiment for the state, and we're kind of, be a G P for them, and it's DCA, it's going to be people like that, and could become a model for other people, so we're excited about the whole process.
Is that all you had, Bill?
No, mayor.
Okay.
Well, I give my report, so the LCI study is going to be in conjunction with the comprehensive plant update, which will be done by ARC, so guaranteed approval, and costly very low, since they don't charge. We've been working with Steve Morgan's group on Virginia Crossing redevelopment, we're anxious to see documentation from the core engineers because of that Flint River tributary underneath that site, the other thing is we have had some creative approaches on the Dearborn Plaza, which will involve some public investment, if you know or not, College Park has a regional detention pond, all the businesses downtown and the businesses over on the conventions that are property flow into that regional detention, so they don't have to detain on-site, it's very expensive in a urban situation, so that should be an incentive to the development of Dearborn Plaza.
You're talking like an underground detention pond?
No, we're, we're talking about trying to avoid the cost of that, and we're working with David and his client, and we're going to be bringing back the briefing to you all to kind of show you all the moving parts and make sure everybody's all on the same page. The Development Authority, and David and Katrina and I have been working on it, and it seems to be moving in the right direction, but we need to do all our homework and bring it back and, and let you all see it.
It would be in lieu of very expensive, all individual site, underground detentions, tanks underground.
Yeah, it's cost prohibitive for a small business to do something like that.
Yeah.
It's outrageous.
We, we think we have stumbled upon a win-win, so we're going to work.
There we go. Steve, you got anything in the legal world?
I don't have anything else.
Thank you. Todd?
Mr. Mayor, we've been awarded the Georgia Recreation Parks Association fourth district flea and junior boys' basketball tournaments, they will be held on February twenty-sixth and twenty-seventh, which will be next Friday and Saturday at the Hoistman Center.
Nice, awesome. How many people are we expecting to come? Like, is it a few hundred or?
Couple hundred.
Couple hundred?
They'll be traveling from cities of Carrollton and Carroll County, Thomaston, Del Roswell, Union City, Riverdale, and some of the other cities in West Georgia.
Yeah, I was just wondering if there's a way that our businesses can sort of attract them during that time.
We've, we've been trying, well, they do the, the dining restaurants do, a lot of them do go and eat out.
Yeah.
But we've been also trying for the state tournaments as well.
Okay.
They need to have multiple gym floors to host, to host those tournaments, but it's not going to stop us from keep trying.
Okay, excellent.
All right, Rick?
Mayor, we, I'm proud to report, we have four of our nine police vacancies filled, one of our code enforcement vacancies filled, are the only code enforcement vacancy that we had filled, and as if we haven't been audited enough, we've got the state group coming out to, to check us on our certification next week, so, we're threatened for that right now.
All right, Annalee?
Mayor, just wrapping up, Dogwood project, trying to get the utility certification for that project coming up, so we meet the lead deadline, and also, just beginning on the Loop Road in the right of lane.
There you go.
And completing the parking project. And the parking project.
How's that going? I noticed that they've sort of pulled those, that second driveway in the back of the city hall.
Yeah, they made the driveway out, so, and they've got to resurface the whole back line.
Okay.
Put any pavers back there?
No, no pavers.
I am, I'm going to lay those or something.
I'm a sucker whiplash.
All right, I guess I got everybody. All right, public comment, this can be a question or comment about anything tonight, not necessarily anything we discussed, or voted on, or.
I'd like to invite everybody out to the Academy Theater Friday night at eight, it's the last of the Red Hot Lovers, if you like a good belly laugh, it's hysterical, they're coming up from Stockbridge with a very successful run, though it's Friday, Saturday at eight, Sunday at two, and then runs again the following weekend through March sixth.
Thank you.
Tickets are seventeen in advance, twenty at the door.
Thank you, ma'am. Any other questions or comments? Rob?
Since the T-Spot is not completed, how long is King Reed is going to take to?
Well, I think he realizes that the majority of us are on board with the plan, so, I believe that we'd probably be meeting either later this month or first part of March, and I, and I think we'll, I think we'll reach a compromise, because we've already, my argument with this has been, if we did a seventy-five, twenty-five split, all the cities agree to that, if Hayville wanted to give fifty percent of their money to Marta, we could give fifty percent of our money to Marta, same with City of Atlanta, he can give whatever he wants, but, I don't, I, I, my comment during this discussions has been, all of our transportation needs are different, you know, we don't, we've got pretty good bus service, we've got pretty good market service, we're, we're a mile from, mile and a half from two market stations, we don't have the same transportation challenges that Alpharetta and Roswell and Sandy Springs have, so, it's, it's very unfair to try to put us all in one basket, but that's unfortunately the way the legislation works, we got to pretty much come to, come to an agreement, it's going to go to the default, which actually would benefit Hayville, but it hurts everybody else, because the default position is a blended average of what you spend on transportation related projects in the last three years, so.
Thank you.
Hopefully, he'll turn around. Any other questions or comments?
Eileen Green.
Eileen?
Thirty-five, thirty-two, South Fulton Avenue, and I did want to bring up again the alcohol ordinance, I'm currently, Jennifer knows I've come and talked to her, I don't know, maybe four times about applying for an alcohol license for my bed and breakfast, and.
If you don't fit into any category.
I know, and I am thankful that I've been allowed to have a bed and breakfast in Hayville, I couldn't have kept my family home, and it's a huge blessing, and people come from all over the world to stay with me, it's fascinating, I am currently in progress for my second level sommelier, and I really don't know of anybody else in this area that will have that, I would like to have wine dinners, so, if you're going to toss all the ideas in a basket.
Well, a wine bar would be one, one that we would talk about, which has relaxed food sales.
Right, but a wine dinner would be similar to what we're talking about with the beer, I know, or just, he's thinking about it now, but, now, I have catered at a brewery in Atlanta, I catered at Monday Night Brewery, and what they do at Monday night is, everybody pays a ticket, so the, let's say Laura was going to throw a party at Monday Night Brewery, or she's going to throw a party at Arches, so, she goes, she contracts with them, and the way that it works is she pays per head, so, let's say she's going to buy, you know, tickets for everybody that's here tonight, so she pays for a hundred tickets, and she pays that gentleman for the price that he wants for a hundred people to walk through the door, each one of those is figured out to have three drinks, let's say, so then.
It's legal.
So, then, I come in as, as her guest, and I, I'm on the sign-up list, and I get those three tickets, when I go to get my drink, I walk up to the bar, and it's in a glass, a real glass, which is kind of what Eric was indicating, by pint, I, I went and I asked him, I said, did you say something about drinking in your place, because not everybody understands what a pint is, it's a glass, that's what it is, so I just wanted to clarify that a little bit, and then everybody would, there is an element of control there, once you're up with your three tickets, then that's it for the night, so it's within the parameters of what was paid for by the person that's making the contract, so for me, I'd like to have a wine dinner at the bed and breakfast, let's say, I want to do four wine dinners a year, so maybe I would charge sixty-five dollars per head for a wine dinner, and in that would be maybe a person that's already selling wine to Eric, so I can partner with him, and his winemaker could come from that place, so then, let's say, Mike and Laura, they contract to come over, they'll buy tickets to my wine dinner, they eat the food I make, and then they get three glasses of wine from the winemaker that Eric's selling that wine in his shop, so then later, they say, you know, I could go over to Beer Girl, and I could get that wine, but these are the kinds of things that, and they actually came to wine school with me and studied, they haven't gone on to the second level, but I'm doing that in April.
Josh has been to drinking school, he hasn't.
Well, yeah, but it's a little different.
That's why they have the next list.
But anyway, since everybody's getting up the, the Santa's List, I thought I would put my ideas.
Well, would you email us your Santa's List?
Yes, yes, I would, but, you know, the fire's been a little hot under the alcohol ordinance situation, so I've sort of backed off from the whole thing, and then, with going for the WSET, the sommelier license, it's kind of.
Will you tell them what that is?
Oh, okay, I'll be a wine expert, so there's only another level over me, or actually two levels with certain, certain places, but, it's an international certification that's put out, it's the oldest one in the world, put out in England, so if I want to do my top-top certification, I have to go and study there, but it is pretty exciting, so I will put it in an email, but it would be a different type of an animal, in other words, people couldn't come and knock on my door or walk in and say, like, you couldn't go over and buy a glass of Merlot. You know, you'd have to have a dinner that.
I'd have to go to the Beer Girl and buy a bottle of it.
Exactly, and then go home.
So, anyway. Now's the time to put it in, I think, this is what you said, the Santa's List, anybody who's, who's looking for something, this is the time.
Right, and I know there's all the parameters of, you know, the, the, the hours that people are open, and how many days we have to be open, and some of these things, I think, really need to be considered in the modernization of what we've got to talk about, and maybe there are some other owners like Michael Simpson with Amida at the, at Joffre's, let's say, maybe some people can't meet the, being open for six days a week. Maybe some people can't meet the being open for six days a week, because they've got other issues in their, like, I know for me, I couldn't be open seven days a week. I'm already open nine, you know, with, running two businesses, so to speak. So, I think these are some of the things that also need to be considered in a little bit of maybe some laxing of, you know, if it's a smaller place and they can't be open six days a week. Like, let's say I wanted to open a T-room in my house in a year, maybe I want to. And in that, I might wanna sell wine. Well, maybe I can't stretch it to be open six days. Would you allow me to be open for brunch on Sunday? And then lunch Thursday, Friday, Saturday?
Well, tho, those are things that we need to consider while we're doing this, because our current ordinance never anticipated anything like this.
Right. But I think that these are new, smaller businesses that are coming along, and I think it's gonna be so exciting that we have a place like Arches where people can go and have a party. It's just gonna be fabulous for the businesses to be able to go there.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay.